Seventh at six oh nine P M.
Recording in progress.
And welcome you to the Anchorage School District School Board meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District. The board thanks parents, students, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. With that said, first item on our agenda is to have a land acknowledgement and flag secluded. Will our student representative please lead us?
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude of the sacred ancestral lands of the Denina people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of its indigenous peoples. Chinon.
Thank you. Did want to note regarding the call to order and roll call that we do have all board members present except online. We have member President Bellamy and Member Higgins. With that said, the next item A three on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented made by Member Solomon, a second by Member Lessons. Any objection? Hearing seen none, the agenda is approved. Move on to B one, Student Representative. Michelle.
So we had our last meeting on January seventeenth, and then our next one is next Tuesday, February fourteenth at eleven fifteen A M. During this meeting, we'll hear from our school spotlights from East, Family Partnership, Rome, Groening, and Goldenview. We will elect the president-elect who will take my position next year. And then we will have discussions about the graduation regalia, policy update, the school start time, and civic engagement in education. So super looking forward to that meeting. And then we also had four S A B high school representatives fly down with Member Lessons and Wilson in Juneau this past weekend, and they have been asked to give a presentation at the next school board meeting on the twenty first about their trip. So I will let them share all the details about that. So that's about it.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions? Hearing seen none, we'll move on to B two, Mental Health and School Start Times Update. Dr. Bryant, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We will have a brief presentation from a guest speaker on the intersection of school start times and wellness. So I'll go ahead and pass it on to our guests.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Lisa Melzer. I'm a pediatric sleep psychologist in Denver, Colorado, and I've done a lot of work over the years with school start times, and I'm going to present to you some research findings. Someone else is sharing those, so I can't pull my slides up.
Just a moment while we address that.
No problem. Excellent. All right. Okay, it says you should be able to see my slides now. So again, thank you for the opportunity to present, and we have about twenty minutes or so of information and then time for questions. So I'm just going to jump right into the fact that we know adolescents have a biological need of eight and a half to nine and a quarter hours of sleep. So this isn't a desire. This isn't a just being lazy. It's been tested biologically that adolescents have a significant sleep need, but in the United States, three out of four adolescents are getting seven hours or less per night. So what happens when kids and teens don't get enough sleep? The number one thing that we see is mood and affect changes. So significant anxiety increases, depressive symptoms increase. Any parent can tell you when their kid hasn't gotten enough sleep because they're more moody, irritable, grumpy. Definitely notice it right away. We also see significant behavior problems, including impulse control, hyperactivity, and difficulties paying attention. Neurocognitive deficits such as difficulties with learning, memory, and then concentration in the classroom. And especially in adolescents, we see increased risk-taking behaviors and accidents. And finally, there's a direct link between insufficient sleep duration and weight gain, and we see that across the age groups from preschoolers through adults. Now, there's a number of reasons that kids and teens don't get enough sleep. So first, we have homework and stress. There's caffeine that's widely available, technology that's used all the time, extracurricular activities that occur into the late evening. And of course, what we're going to discuss today is school start times because this is something that we can change on a wide policy level for a lot for all of the teens at the same time. Now, most parents say to me, well, if my teen just turned off their electronics and went to bed earlier, we'd all be fine. And the issue is, is that when kids go through puberty, hormones change, all hormones change, and this affects their circadian rhythm. So your circadian rhythm is a twenty-four plus point-two hour rhythm that helps to regulate when you're awake and when you're asleep. Now, because it's twenty-four point-two hours, we have to use external cues to keep our circadian rhythm on track. The strongest cues are light and dark, and when darkness happens, that sends a cue to our brain to make melatonin. And melatonin is released and continues to be released overnight while we're sleeping. And then in the morning, when we have sunlight, which I know your mornings happen a little bit later, but bright light helps to tell our brain suppress melatonin and wake up. Now, again, when adolescents go through puberty, this natural hormone of melatonin gets delayed as represented by this red line by about one to two hours, and this is across teens. And what this translates to is in the evening, when our melatonin is being released and most people are getting ready for bed, teens are at the peak of wakefulness. And then at seven A M., when we ask them to get behind the wheel of a car or get to school, put their seat, get in their seat and learn at their optimal ability, they're at their peak of physiological sleepiness. And so it's a significant detriment to our students to have early school start times, and this is the biological science behind that. Now, I want to take a step back into a broader perspective of why changing school start times is important. This is a model you may be familiar with that looks at the whole school, whole community, and whole child. So of course, our students and our children are at the center of this model. We want them to be healthy, safe, engaged, challenged, and supported. But it takes a lot for our students to be successful. We need helpful policies, processes, we need improved learning and improved health. All of those things are scaffolded by family, employee wellness, health education, health services, factors in our community as well that help our students be the most successful. And so it's an integrated perspective that we think of our students, and so it's an integrated approach that we think about what happens when we change school start times. I'm going to be providing data to you today from the Cherry Creek School District, which is the fourth largest school district in Colorado. It is over fifty-five thousand students enrolled. Fifty-three percent of the students are white and twenty percent are Hispanic. Twenty-nine percent of the students qualified for free and reduced lunch, and notably the southeast Denver metro area of where the district is has a geographic footprint of a hundred and eight square miles. And the reason why I point this out is because a lot of students have long bus rides in order to get to school. In the fall of twenty seventeen, Cherry Creek implemented later school start times for middle and high schools, but for elementary schools, start times were moved one hour earlier from nine A M. to eight A M. Middle schools were delayed from an average of about eight A M. to eight fifty A M., and high schools were delayed from seven ten to eight twenty A M. The superintendent at the time when he retired said his one regret was not being able to push it all the way to eight thirty, but because of busing limitations, this was the best that they were able to do. At the time that they implemented the healthy school start times, I want to point out there was also significant health education around sleep provided to students and families in multiple languages, and this was important to maximize the positive impact and ensure that with a later start time, students continue to get healthy sleep as well as to improve healthy sleep habits. So sleep needs, consistent routines, and limits to technology and caffeine were some of the things that were highlighted. In order to study this, we created the Castle Study, which was changing start times. It was a longitudinal effect study over three years in a comprehensive three hundred and sixty degree evaluation of outcomes. My colleagues are shown here, Dr. Amy Plog and Dr. Kyla Wallstrom, who are instrumental in helping me complete this work. We did three annual student surveys of students. So we did it in the spring of twenty seventeen before the start time was implemented, post-change in the spring of twenty eighteen, and our follow-up was in the spring of twenty nineteen. We have student data cohort of student whose parents said that we were allowed to link their data identified year over year, and so we were able to follow subgroup of our students longitudinally. I also don't have listed on here, but we'll be sharing with you. At the same time that the annual surveys of students occurred, we also had surveys of teachers and staff as well as parents. And finally, we obtained community data from the Colorado Department of Transportation about motor vehicle crashes. So starting with the student and the individual level outcomes that we looked at, this just gives you a sense of the scope of our study, and when you look at the graphs that are coming up, this pink color here were elementary school students, grades K through two. These were parent-reported data. Green is elementary school students, grades three through five, who self-reported on data. The blue is middle school students, grades six through eight, and purple was high school. Pre-change was grades nine through eleven, and post-change was grades nine through twelve. And we had a very decent representation of our students across years. This was the average end per year. They were representative of our students, and then this was the cohort whose students we were able to link year over year. So starting with bedtime was our first outcome that we look at. When you start down here at the bottom, these are elementary school students. Remember, their start time was one hour earlier, so their bedtime was advanced and moved earlier by about ten minutes, whereas middle school students and high school students' bedtimes were delayed by about ten to fifteen minutes. So this busted one of the first significant myths about changing school start times, which is that when we have later start times, students will simply go to bed later. We did not find that. However, what we found were significant changes in wake time, and this is an important pattern that we will see repeated. The green and the pink lines here are overlapping because they were identical, and it shows you that students were waking about twenty minutes earlier in the elementary school level. Middle school students were waking thirty to forty-five minutes later, and high school students were waking forty-five to sixty minutes later. And so a significant change here was all due to wake time and the lack of variability is because wake times were tied to school start times. So what this resulted were changes in total sleep time. Our elementary school students, because their bedtimes did not advance as far as their wake times, had got about ten minutes of less sleep per night, but we found no negative outcomes tied to that. In our middle school students, they averaged an extra twenty to thirty minutes per day, and our high school students, again, an extra thirty to forty-five minutes per day. And if you add that up over the course of the week for our high school students, that's an extra two and a half hours of sleep, and that's a lot of sleep to increase week over week across the school year. Most notably, we were able to see this in what something we call weekend oversleep, which is when you sleep more on weekends than you do on weekdays to make up for your significant sleep deprivation. This dark bar here represents the two-hour mark, which is clinically significant sleep deprivation, and you can see our high school students, following the change of school start times, were no longer significantly sleep deprived as shown by their weekend oversleep. Another way of looking at this is in the perspective of Healthy People, which is a national initiative. The Healthy People twenty twenty goals were set back in twenty ten, and the goal was to increase the proportion of students in grades nine through twelve who got sufficient sleep defined as eight or more hours on an average school night. The goal for Healthy People twenty twenty was to go from a modest thirty point nine percent to a modest thirty-three point one percent. They wanted to increase two point two percent across ten years. In one year of implementing healthy school start times in the Cherry Creek School District, our students went from thirty point four percent obtaining sufficient sleep duration to sixty-two point seven percent. This was maintained, so the change was an increase thirty-two percent, and that was maintained at follow-up. We also looked at this in middle school students with a definition of sufficient sleep duration being at least nine hours because they're slightly younger students. And again, we saw a significant increase, almost twenty-one percent of students, and that was maintained at follow-up. Notably, during the same time period, what we saw across the nation was a decrease in the percent of students who are getting sufficient sleep, dropped from thirty point nine percent down to twenty-five point four percent. So these significant increases were due to the healthy changes in start time and not to anything else across the country. And now the twenty thirty target for the Healthy People Initiative is twenty-seven point four percent, which I will point out is even lower than where we started in twenty ten. I put this slide up here. I have a similar slide for sleep and socioeconomic status that I did not include just for time limits, and what you're looking at here is differences in students by their identified race. And so we had white is in red, orange is our black students, Hispanic students in gray, Asian students in green, and then I'm multiracial and other classified students were in the blue. And what you can see is the same pattern. This is elementary school students, so slightly earlier bedtimes that were maintained, slightly earlier wake times that were maintained, and a slightly shorter sleep duration that was maintained, whereas in high school students across racial groups, what we see is that bedtimes ten to fifteen minutes later, but the wake times significantly later, and sleep duration for all students was significantly longer. I want to look at our cohort students because a lot of people say, well, this is just a change that you had in an environment, but when we're able to track, you can see how much of this is biology, which is natural changes to sleep as opposed to the ecology of healthy school start times. So on these rainbow graphs, what we're starting with is red is kindergarten all the way up to black, which started in tenth grade. And so what happens is students who were in kindergarten at pre-change were in first grade at post-change and second grade at follow-up. That's the longitudinal progression. And what you can see here across the bottom is that our early elementary school students who started in K through three, their bedtimes remained the same. Where bedtimes start to increase is when students progress to the middle school level, which is when they start going through puberty. These dash lines are when students change levels, and we'll come back to that in just a moment. You see that weekend bedtimes follow the same pattern with the exception of all students go to bed later on the weekends, but the delays don't start to happen until the middle school years. Here's the weekday wake time. Again, this pattern is really similar to the one that I showed you with the exception of these dashed lines, and we're going to zoom in on that in just a moment, but I want you to notice the big difference between the weekday wake day wake time pattern, sorry, it's late here, and the weekend wake time pattern. The weekend wake time pattern looks very similar to what you see on weekdays, but the wake time is not that way on weekdays because, again, of school start times. So here's the weekend wake time pattern, and what you see is it clusters here and here, same at both here and follow-up because the elementary school students were starting at eight A M. and the high school students at eight twenty, whereas the middle school students who were starting at eight fifty A M. have later wake times. If we pull this out even further and start with our students who were at elementary school pre-change, so nine o'clock was their start time, they progressed to middle school where they had an eight fifty start time and stayed at eight fifty. So you can see there was no change to their wake time because, in essence, their school start time did not change. Whereas in the pink, you have a student who started in middle school at eighth grade and then progressed to high school. So they went from an eight A M. start time to eight twenty, so they slept a little bit later with a twenty-minute later starts time. In green, these are students who were in elementary school, started with nine A M., following the change of start time went to eight A M., and then went back to eight fifty A M. So you're starting to see the pattern here, right, that wake times are set by school start times. Again, a middle school student who went from eight A M. to eight fifty A M., back to eight twenty A M. And so this is the pattern and why start times are so important for sleep. Now, I know we also wanted to talk a lot today about daytime functioning, and we had four primary outcomes that we looked at, and this, again, is in our longitudinal cohort. Again, let me orient you, red is pre-change, gray is post-change, blue is follow-up. The diagonal slash lines here are when students were in middle school, and the dotted lines were when they were in high school. And what you see again in our early elementary school students is there were no significant changes in the proportion of students who were feeling sad, nervous, worried, or too tired to keep up with their schoolwork with the change in start times. Where you start to see changes with the mood outcomes in particular are in middle school. So these are students who started in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, and then you can see some students here again, fifth to seventh grade, you see the feeling nervous also increased as well as feeling worried. And so a lot of these changes occurred in the middle school years as students were going through puberty. The most notable changes we found, though, were too tired to keep up with the schoolwork were significant decreases, especially in our high school students. So we went from about thirty-five percent of students reporting they were too tired to keep up with their schoolwork down to about twenty-five percent. Even though that still sounds like a lot, that is an improvement because if students are unable to keep up with school participation did decrease because there was a district-wide mandate that students could, there could not be before-school activities for elementary school students because eight A M. was deemed early enough. There was also a significant decrease in enrollment in the before-care programs at school. Middle school before-school participation and high school before-school participation did not change, same with employment. After school, we did not see a change in percent of students who were participating at the elementary school level. We did see small decreases in the middle school participation and the high school participation. This was not unexpected and is a challenge when schools get out later, but when we think about the proportion of students who may or may not be participating in activities compared to a hundred percent of students who now have the opportunity to sleep more, this was a sacrifice that the district was felt was worthwhile. Employment, you will see there was a decrease here in the follow-up, in the post-change year with an increase back at the follow-up year. What was notable is we broke out the employment data by students who qualified for free and reduced lunch and those who didn't. And students who qualified for free and reduced lunch, there was no change in their employ in the percent of students who were employed before and after the start time change. So for those students where employment is very important for their family, there was no change to their ability to continue working with a later start and end time. All right, stepping back into the family and the school-level outcomes. This is parent sleep. This is a very busy table, so I'll just walk you through. What happens is parents have students sometimes only in one level, but sometimes across levels, and that's what each of these columns represent. When you had students only in the elementary school level, what we found was very similar to what we saw in the students, which is that bedtimes were moved earlier by about nine minutes and wake times by about fourteen minutes. If there's no data in a cell, that means there is no significant finding. So even though there are these slight changes, there is no significant change to sleep duration, sufficient sleep, good sleep quality, or the percent of parents who reported feeling tired. Where we start to see really significant changes were for parents who had either a middle school student or, in particular, a high school student, where their wake times were significantly later. Same thing with their sleep duration and significant increase of twenty minutes per night is an hour and forty minutes by the end of a school week. A significant increase in the percent of parents who were reporting getting sufficient sleep duration at a time when adults in the state of Colorado were getting less sleep. Percent of parents reporting good sleep quality, and most notably for high school parents, the ones a significant decrease in those who are reporting feeling tired during the day. We saw similar patterns for our teachers and our staff sleep-wake. So again, elementary school teachers went to bed earlier, but the middle and high school teachers' bedtimes remained the same. Wake times, it's the exact same pattern. Middle school teachers and high school teachers got to wake later, which meant that they also got increased sleep duration. And what did that translate to? First of all, looking at the percent of sufficient sleep duration did not change across elementary school, but we saw a significant increase in middle school and an even more significant increase in high school. And by having healthy school start times, it provides equity across our teachers, across levels, to have an opportunity to get sufficient sleep duration, which also impacts teacher mood, teacher functioning, and their ability to be the best teachers they can be in a classroom. The percent of teachers reporting feeling tired slightly increased in elementary school, that was not surprising with an earlier wake and start time, but you'll see by the by the follow-up period, it normalized again. And that's why you have to recognize change is hard, and the first year after change, things are still hard. We're five years post-change now, and nobody remembers what life was like, but I can tell you not a single high school student or teacher would like to go back to the way that it was. And you can see here the percent of students that are percent of teachers feeling very tired significantly dropped at the high school level. And then one final step out into our community-level outcomes, in particular drowsy driving. This was self-reported data for students who reported being regular drivers. Frequent drowsy driving, which is at least one day a week, that's a lot of drowsy driving. There was a significant drop in the percent of students who were reporting that. So that makes it a lot safer for students, especially if it's dark in the morning when they're driving for school. We also looked at teen motor vehicle crashes in Arapahoe County where the Cherry Creek School District compared to Adams versus Douglas County, our neighboring counties. And in the blue line here, you can see there was a significant decrease in the in the percent of motor vehicle crashes in Arapahoe County where it was maintained or increased in our neighboring counties. And then, of course, in twenty nineteen, COVID happened, and so we took advantage of that opportunity and did a study called nested where we looked at sleep in teens across the United States, including Alaska, and we had over five thousand teens complete an online survey that told us about their school type. Were you going to school in person? Did you have online synchronous school, which meant you had a set time that you had to turn on your computer and be present? Or did you have online asynchronous school, which meant you could do school whenever you wanted? And what we looked at, not surprisingly, was that sleep patterns differed based on the school start times. So red was in person, blue was synchronous, and green was asynchronous, and middle school is lighter than high school colors here. And so bedtimes, again, get slightly later, the less stringent your school schedule is, but you can see this very significant difference in terms of wake times between students who had to get up and get on a bus versus students who could get up and just turn on their computer versus students who didn't have to get up at all. And most notably with the sleep opportunity, I want to point out the students who were not restricted by having to go to school at a set time were obtaining, on average, nine and a quarter hours of sleep, the same number that I started this talk with that was biologically shown almost forty years ago that this is an adolescent biological sleep need. And then finally, this is looking just comparing in-person students versus the synchronous students are in dark blue, in-person is in light blue, and these are school start time windows. So starting with the earliest to the latest, not surprisingly, wake time is later with later start times. What was really notable is that within each time bracket, it's about seventy-minute difference in wake times between students who had to attend school in person versus those who were attending online. And again, that speaks to the amount of time that students must spend in the morning getting ready and transporting and commuting the same way that adults have to experience as well. So in summary, healthy school start times are important to ensure sleep health of secondary school students. In general, moving early elementary school start times earlier resulted in small changes to their sleep, but no significant changes to their mental health outcomes, while moving mental middle school and high school times later had significant changes on sleep and daytime functioning. There are downstream effects for healthy school start times, so while we're focusing on students and mental health, it's also important to consider the benefits that this may have for parents, teachers, and the broader community, so considering the entire socio-ecological system. There are a lot of people who helped with my research. They're all listed here, and I will now take questions.
Thank you, Dr. Melzer. Turning to in the room first, questions on the presentation. Member Lessons.
I don't have a question, but I'm astounded at the presentation and grateful for it, and I never thought to ask about the impact of start times on parent sleep, and I thought that was and teacher and staff sleep. So very logical things to look at. Thank you for shedding new light on a subject that I think is incredibly important.
Thank you.
Other questions in the room? Seeing none. Any questions online?
Now, just a ditto, Dr. Melzer, thank you for this. It's very timely and very enlightening. We had a discussion maybe four years ago.
Yes.
But we've circled back around.
I'm so happy that you have.
So that is, and that's, I think that's a good thing. We get to look at it with fresh eyes and fresh ears and knowing that the data shows that it's good for kids and adults.
Yes.
I can't get on about the adult piece either.
You know, we do get so focused in, and so much of the research has focused on teens and students, which is our central focus here, but again, thinking about the broader community, it is impactful for the entire families, and I think that's important to consider. We also did qualitative interviews. I didn't share all of those results here. I have shared that by email through our, that was in our board report that includes sample quotes. As you're thinking about this and thinking about, you know, potential issues in terms of implementation and mitigating potential problems because there, it's not easy. Change is hard. It affects a lot of people, but again, the benefits so far outweigh the consequences of the changes, and people adapt, and so that's important to consider as well. So I'm always available for additional questions via email or in a study section meeting if needed in the future.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Melzer. We have one question for you from Member Higgins. Yeah, Pat, go ahead, please.
If it's me, I just, I just wanted to say thank you. I have been to the NSBA and listened to presentations that have given similar support for this type of change, but I like objective data like this, and it's something I think the board is has already expressed interest in pursuing and discussing and looking at options and putting kids first, and I just, I enjoyed your presentation. It'll take me a while to process it all, but I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And in closing, Dr. Melzer, I'll say I appreciate the data. Thank you for making time, especially late in your evening, and I found the data regarding the pandemic especially insightful, given the lack of restraints and the flexibility that we had due to given the lack of restraints and the flexibility that we had due to the public health emergency. It was fascinating to see how students naturally adapted to what we knew is the is scientifically best for them. So.
Yeah, if I have one more moment, I'll just comment because I just focused on the sleep outcomes during the pandemic. But we did look at mental health and academic outcomes. And for what it's worth, when students actually go to school, clearly they have better academic outcomes and they have better mental health. And so, you know, the takeaway message from this was that students need sleep, right? And they need to go to school. So how can we merge those two, right? So in order to go to school, we need to ensure that they're getting sufficient sleep to ensure continued academic and mental health positive outcomes. So I think that's just important to mix in as we're in our post-COVID era and reconsidering how do we best approach education. Students need to be in school. I mean, I don't think they need to stay home and just sleep all day. They need to be in school. They need structured schedules. That's important for socialization, education, and mental health. But we need to give them the opportunity to get enough sleep so that they can be fully successful.
Thank you, Dr. Mills, for your again for your time tonight. Dr. Brian, any closing remarks before we move on?
Again, thank you, Dr. Mills. I echo the comments of the school board. This was very informative, very timely, and you're informing a policy making process all the way up here in Alaska. So thanks for all that you do.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, moving on to agenda items C1. We have a goal monitoring conversation. I will read the entry framing that we have through President Bellamy. So we are now going to have our monitoring conversation on the report that was given to us at our last meeting. Tonight, our primary conversation will be focused on our goal of college career and life readiness, specifically beginning with the freshman class in September 2020. The percent of high school students graduating life ready as well as college career ready will increase from a baseline of to be determined in spring 2022 to 90% in spring 2026. And interim goal 3.2, Algebra II completion rates. The percentage of grade nine through 12 students successfully completing Algebra II, grade A, B, or C will increase from 30% in spring 2022 to 32% in spring 2023. I first want to confirm that all four components of the monitoring report are present. Number one, the report clearly shows what is being monitored and that's focuses specific and interim goal. Number two, the show is data for the three previous reporting periods and the current reporting period and the targeted reporting periods. Number three is the report shows the superintendent's evaluation of performance. And number four, that the report shows supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation via the tables provided. It also indicates next steps. With all components present, we're ready to begin our progress monitoring conversation. So for the purpose of understanding the current reality for all students as compared to this goal, let us begin with questions that fall into the who, what, and why categories. Once the board fully understands the current reality, then we'll move on to the how category of questions to hear what the superintendent has planned in terms of the response to the data. With that conversation logic model in mind, the floor is now open to board members who wish to engage in inquiry regarding the reading proficiency goal one and interim goal 1.1 monitoring technical report. And I believe that's actually the college career life ready goal. Who has questions for Dr. Brian and his team? Member Lessons.
Sure. Thank you very much. I was curious about what accounts for the increases, especially among our economically disadvantaged students in both number and percent enrolling and completing. There were some upticks in a number of subgroups, but maybe most noticeable in our economically disadvantaged population. Do you think things are going the right direction?
Yeah, they're going in the right direction. I just caution that those are pretty small. They're pretty, really, most of them are less than 1%. And so that could be just the maneuvering of the transitions between different schools and whatnot and from our district and to and from. So yeah, yeah, those are positive. But it just kind of want to make sure that we are thinking about that. One, one thing that we are looking at a lot is our EOS equal opportunity schools work and trying to get a lot more kids identified into upper level courses. And of course, if they're getting into upper level courses, they're also getting into upper level math courses as well.
Yep. Member Lessons, follow.
Could you just review what the equal opportunity schools are, please?
I now let Kirsten, she's really involved with that. So I'll let Kirsten Johnson drop the senior director of secondary.
Thanks through the chair to member Lessons. So our equal opportunity schools work is work that we, there's an organization called the Equal Opportunity Schools that we're partnering with essentially targets increasing enrollment in advanced placement coursework. Really, we have expanded to not just advanced placement coursework, but some of the prerequisite coursework that goes into advanced placement as well. All eight of our comprehensive high schools are working on this project and actively getting training. They're also engaging with students in a very detailed way to increase our student, non-traditional students in those courses. So we're looking at different demographic groups and really trying to target their enrollment in those courses. And then just to go back to the economically disadvantaged question that you originally asked, the other, the other piece that we are really working on is inclusive practices in our schools. So that's really getting our kids back into regular education curriculum, not an alternate curriculum, and giving them the supports in that regular education curriculum so that they can be successful and and start advancing through some of those upper level courses as well. So they don't get tracked, if you will. When you look at economically disadvantaged students, they often have another subcategory that's associated with that. And so that could potentially be some of the uptick there as well.
One, one thing that we are doing to help this is we were piloting this year Hampton Algebra and Geometry and Construction, identifying kids that need a little more support and a different way of learning those different subjects. And the data that we've had before from other districts is success in Algebra II actually is better for those kids once they're in those courses. So it's going to be interesting to see if that goes up once that's fully implemented with our first cohort in the next two years.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Thank you, team. Member Wilson.
Can you tell us a little bit more about those classes in the plan?
So Hampton Algebra and Geometry and Construction are more hands-on based. I am going to, although I know quite a bit about them, I'm going to let Amanda give you the real answer. So this is Amanda Barr, our coordinator for mathematics in the district.
Thank you. So those two courses are collaborations between CTE and math courses. Students get a credit for a CTE course and a math course. In Ampton Algebra, it's targeted towards manufacturing in addition to learning Algebra I content. And then in geometry, it's aligned with a construction course for CTE.
And can you clarify how many classes currently? And how many, if we intend to expand that?
We currently have three schools piloting one, at least one of those versions. We've got the Atchugiac. Oh, West. There's one more. Service.
Thanks. So, yeah. And if I, if I could just interject and add to Amanda's response, the greater vision for college career life ready work is to include more courses of that nature in the future. And not just math related courses that take that approach as well, but really looking at the subject matter through the lens of a career. So they're tangible, they're motivating for kids, and it's a different approach to teaching in the classroom. So I'll stop there because I didn't talk about Algebra II.
Thank you, Member Wilson. President Bellamy, your hand is up.
Yes, thank you. I just want to know the gold percentage. Are we going to set that percentage to spring or are we going to wait until the board reviews?
Since we've got President Bellamy, since we have got really involved in our college career life ready goal and our work with Ford NGL, we are looking at those options right now because we don't want to set something and then it doesn't match what our work is going to be in.
Yeah, okay.
And so we're looking at that now. We hope to have something this spring for you.
Okay, that that makes sense. Can I have a follow up or another question? I'm sorry.
Please proceed.
So I noticed that we're looking, the data covers those kids that get an A, a B, or a C. Because I, you know, that that really equivalent equates to success in college. I mean, the research tells us that. Do they have, do our students have opportunities to retake? And do we have that data on how many kids are retaking? Like if they failed, if they failed it, I want to know what the kids who fail it or don't get an A, B, or C, what are their opportunities to either retake or? Yeah, to retake the class if they fail it.
Yes, President Bellamy, we do, kids can retake courses. Usually we have them take those online so they don't take up any of their additional slots in their schedules. But we do have that and occasionally that they do actually go back and do it face to face. But normally those are online courses. And we have numerous kids doing that all the time.
So, but they can, they can, they don't have to take online?
No.
Okay, they can, they can just choose to retake it?
Yes.
All right. So and it looks like I want to, I want to think that the equal opportunity schools that we are creating more opportunities for kids to be in these classes. And so, you know, I'm just a little curious as to how are they, how are our students recommended? Oh, that's a how question. I can come back to that. But so what support those kids get outside of the classroom for the, for Algebra II?
It all depends upon the school.
Yeah.
And what the school offers for tutoring options. Some schools are doing it during lunch. Some schools are using peer tutors. Some schools are doing after school tutoring. It just depends upon what, what options in each individual school.
But you, do we think every school is is providing some support if nothing other than the MTSS supports?
Yes, yes, they're doing something at each of the different schools.
Okay, okay. All right. Okay, I'll hold for now. Thank you.
President Bellamy, Member Higgins.
Yeah, I guess the question I always like, and it's one of the things legislators ask, if we had more money, what would we be doing that we aren't doing right now that we could do to help improve these outcomes? But I know finances is a problem, but assuming that we had more money, we had enough to, we'd have to cut, we add. What, what are we, what opportunities are we missing?
Mr. Higgins, there's, I'm sure we can find things that would help kids be more successful in these courses. You know, in order to get into Algebra II and be successful in Algebra II, you need to have had many years of success in math from elementary to be proficient up through middle school and take your Algebra and Geometry courses. So really looking at all the way down to elementary and making sure that we're preparing kids to be successful in Algebra II is, is something that we would always look at. And if a big chunk of money came forward, I'm sure that Amanda would be able to find something that would help us move this work forward, especially to get kids prepared and ready for Algebra II.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Member Lessons.
This is something that I stumbled across. Well, no, I didn't stumble across. It came to me at some point in the fall and I remembered it while I was looking at the data. And the takeaway from this report was that the nation's economic competitiveness competitiveness and scientific innovation is constrained by racial and ethnic underrepresentation in the STEM workforce. So my curiosity, and we were sort of just speaking about this, was we have, we have students taking Algebra II in ninth grade. That means that they're getting prepared, as you were just saying, they're doing pre-algebra in sixth grade to go through Algebra and Geometry. Do we know, do we have disaggregated data for, for who is completing Algebra II at what level? And if we had that, I mean, at what grade? So if we knew who was completing Algebra II, it's great that they're completing Algebra II whenever. But if we want to provide further math opportunities for more of our students, I guess would knowing who is taking it earlier versus taking it later help us target, I guess, interventions, new opportunities, new ways of teaching earlier in their elementary years? That's a long question.
I kind of, I kind of get your gist about the question, Member Lessons. I'm, you know, when we identify kids or when they're identified at earlier ages of being able to move forward in math, it's important that we have opportunities for them. And I believe that, you know, one of the things we just talked about earlier in the work session was about sixth graders to middle school. We, when we have highly effective teachers in the middle school that are teaching math, those sixth graders get to actually see those upper level math courses sooner. And we can move them forward quicker. So I think, you know, identifying who's doing the Algebra II in ninth grade, that would take us some work. We didn't really prepare that. We just got the percentages because it is normally a 10th and 11th grade course. That's where the most, most of our kids take Algebra II. But really, I think that getting sixth grade into middle school will help increase these numbers once, you know, four or five years when we get them up to that level. I hope that answers your question. Maybe we can follow up later.
I guess I think it's a really relevant point. It's one of the benefits of middle school. I mean, we received an email in support of ASD Virtual saying that 17 children at one of our schools are actually enrolled in pre-algebra in sixth grade. And that's clearly not available at most of our sixth grade programs across the, across the district. So if we can be offering more of those early opportunities, it would seem to me then that the downstream effect is that maybe we can help prepare a more robust tech and math and STEAM savvy workforce for Alaska's future across all socioeconomic lines.
Yeah, I think Ms. Johnson has something.
So I was just going to kind of add to your point, Member Lessons, that one of the challenges we have right now with sixth grade at two different levels is math instruction. That's one of the academic benefits to move. And we have seen some success as they've gone from those summer programs and then continued to work on, on their deficits throughout the school year like Amanda was describing in the classroom. We are just really trying all of our, our options to get instruction time for kids that need that help.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Any other how questions in the room first before we go online? Hearing soon. Going online, do you have a how question?
Yeah, just that the question I almost asked before, just how they, how are students recommended? How do they, I know they advance through. They have to have certain levels of math before, before they can get to Algebra II. But, you know, some kids are so focused on just getting, doing the least. I guess I'm still concerned about wanting to know how are we, what are we doing to encourage? And I like the fact that you're hooking kids up with adults and these adults are going to push them instead of saying, well, I already had Algebra I, I don't need Algebra II. Because I don't think they don't need it to graduate. But they do need it for, for their future. So I don't even know if that's a question or just a concern, but yeah, I just want to make sure that we are, that we, knowing that our kids come from different, you know, backgrounds and different economic abilities. I know that there are kids out there that can do this work and just don't have access to it. And I just don't want us to forget to, I just want us to figure out how we are going to reach those kids and keep, keep reaching out for those kids. That's, that's, it's not really, I guess it's not a question. But I'm more of a comment. Thank you.
Follow up from the team on that. I guess one follow up is, you know, we have different levels of algebra, some lower levels and then the regular algebra. And when teachers get kiddos into those classes, they're, they're doing assessments right away to make sure they're, they're placed appropriately. And if they're not, they're moving them and getting them and talking to them and their parents about getting into the. And if they're not, they're moving them and getting them and talking to them and their parents about getting into the regular Algebra I courses. That also happens at middle school all the time. As kids come into middle school, the, the math-trained teacher is able to assess them and get them into the pre-algebra or into the Algebra I courses earlier on.
And that same transition takes place in high school, right, from eighth grade to ninth grade?
Yes, yes, it does. And it does whenever any kids come into the school district new to.
Yeah, okay, awesome. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you.
Thank you, President Bellamy. Any other how questions before we move on to the technical report, I think, on our next?
If nobody else has one, I just have a real quick one on, on staff development. What does it look like and how, how are we helping teachers? I know, yeah, on this chart here, I think, you know, I know there's collaboration, there's, you know, onboarding, there's all kinds of things here. Are every school doing these things or how, how is, how does that work?
Well, a lot of it has to do with things that happen district-wide when we get new teachers and onboarding them into their curriculum that happens in the summer. Our department chairs are working with the new teachers when they change course levels to make sure they have somebody or the, the materials, the wherewithal. And usually if it's a new subject to them, they're hooking them up with another teacher through the mentoring program or just in an unofficial mem, deal in the schools. Amanda's team, you want to talk a little bit about professional development you're doing?
Yeah, we, through the district, district-wide professional development days, we have access to teachers and then as Sven mentioned, the, the department chairs at each school do a lot of job-embedded onboarding and, and collaboration within teams. And then at middle school, there's the team approach. They've got the time and the schedule to actually collaborate with their teams. Okay.
So, if I could add on to that, President Bellamy, we have a real focus this year on inclusive practices focusing on math instruction specifically. Last year, we focused on English language, language arts. And essentially, what inclusive practices does is look at our students in special education or other programs like ELL. And many of those students sometimes are in an alternate curriculum based on their needs. What we are doing is systematically across all of our secondary schools, looking at those students' needs and seeing if we can approach it differently in the regular classroom. So, they are exposed to the regular education curriculum. What that does is accelerate them into pathways that make it possible for them to get to Algebra II at a faster rate rather than going slower and, and more methodically. And so, that's where I think we're, we're going to see a lot of changes in, in upper-level math achievement.
Okay, all right. All right, I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you, guys. I promise, I'm done.
Thank you, President Bellamy. Hearing and seeing no other questions, I think that wraps up goal monitoring C1 on Algebra II completion rate. Thank you, everyone. Dr. Bryant, C2, goal monitoring on the reading proficiency technical report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll dive right into our technical report on interim goal 1.1 on reading proficiency. Board goal one is to increase reading proficiency from 40% to 80% by May 2026. Our interim goal tracks performance on FastBridge with the goal of increasing the percentage of students meeting the reading benchmark to 80% by spring 2024. This next slide shows historical progress. The dotted lines on the graph above show our yearly targets. For 2022, 23, the goal was 65%, up from 38% in 21, 22. The red boxes on the chart show the percent of students reading at or above benchmark. There's much work to be done on this front that we can discuss at our next board meeting. This chart disaggregates the data by grade level. You'll also be able to compare the performance of the winter to performance in the fall snapshot. The final column shows the percentage point change since the fall snapshot. This chart disaggregates the data by race, ethnicity, and special populations, including economically disadvantaged and non-English learners. The bottom portion of the chart illustrates the number of schools currently on, near, and below the target. And the next couple of slides provide an overview of the status of implementation. Here you'll see the instructional focus of the pre-K2 implementation strategy. This included early literacy instruction and the multi-tiered system of support structure. This approach is a continuous loop of building capacity of teachers, implementing strong instructional practices, and analyzing data to inform practice. And this chart provides a status update on the implementation strategies in place, which include multi-tiered systems of support, data discussions, professional learning, instruction, and curriculum. And that concludes the technical report. We look forward to a robust, robust dialogue rather between the board and academic leadership at our next board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Clarifying question, Member Lessons.
Thank you. So, when I recently logged on to the data dashboard to kind of take a peek at all of this, there's a, you can look at students who are at risk and some risk. So, when we look at the, the metric, this is on slide three, a percent at above grade level, like which of those segments at risk, some risk are included here?
So, here benchmark is defined as 40th percentile. In terms of the data you're looking at online, I would need to ask our, I'll have to ask our academic services to define the definitions. Then would you or someone on the team be able to clarify?
Can we put that into Board Connect for you on Friday? Because we need to look that up and make sure we give you a good answer.
I, I, would you mind repeating the question, Member? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, the question is, what's the definition of being at risk or some risk as measured in the data dashboard? And is that the same thing? One of those levels or both of those levels as not, or as, as being at the 40th percentile? How do they match up?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, we'll clarify that concordance is appropriate.
Actually, I believe our Senior Director of Assessment and Evaluation might have an answer to that.
Ask and you shall receive.
Go ahead. This will be his first time in this role in front of y'all. This is Chris Olpitz.
Did it turn on? So, when we look at those different risk levels, first, the 40th percentile and above is low risk as well as aggressive growth. And each vendor is going to describe those various categories slightly differently. But 40th percentile and, and above is going to be your low risk or high achieving. And then typically, the metric is 15th percent and below is considered our sort of high-risk category. And 15th to 40th percentile is at risk. And so, that's, those are the percentiles that are typically broken down. When you look at, just to clarify, though, when you look at each vendor, it could be up to 10% or two difference. So, just, I would use caution when looking at those.
Thank you. Any follow-up, Member Lessons? Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the technical report from Dr. Bryant? Member Donnelly.
Dr. Bryant, what were the two schools that met the target in the very last column on that?
Typically, that is a great question. We can clarify that either in a Board Connect or during our discussion. Usually we have an appendix, but it wasn't affixed to this particular presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Seeing no other questions on the technical report, that concludes our goal monitoring section of our agenda. We'll move on to D1, student comments. My understanding is we do not have any students signed up. Moving on to D2, public comments. Read the introduction statement now. Welcome to the school board's first opportunity of the evening for public comment. The board has set aside a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting for public comments. Public comments in excess of one hour will be held at the second opportunity for public comment. At the end of the meeting, more comments may be submitted in writing. During public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is the public's time to speak and the board's time to listen. The school board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through their comments. However, to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. ASD conducts public meetings under Robert's Rules of Order, a set of rules for orderly meetings that have been used since the late 1800s. Those rules require the board and public to be civil and respectful of each other's opinions and statements. Here are a few of the requirements under Robert's Rules. Do not attack a member speaker, members or speakers motives. No profanity or foul language, refrain from disturbing the meeting, no cheering, applause, outbursts, or waving of signs or posters. If you have a handout that you wish to share with the board, please give them to Ms. Foster, who is seated to my left. As chair of the meeting, it is my duty to enforce the rules of civility and decorum. As such, the inconsistent with Robert's Rules of Order, I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of these rules or failure to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Additional details and information may be found in the handout located at the door regarding audience participation and rules of the boardroom. Begin with our sign-in list. First in person, Marnie Hartzell. Not seeing Marnie, and I don't believe she's online. We'll move up to Peter Musse in person.
Is it on? Hi, good evening. Actually, it's Peter Muse. Good evening, I'm Dr. Pete Muse. I'm a longtime advocate for childhood wellness and obesity prevention. Over the years, I've worked with many experts and advocates for, in those arenas, including sometime with Dr. David Satcher, who at the time was the U.S. Surgeon General, also advocating for the CDC's recommendations of 60 minutes of actual physical activity daily. In 2005, Mayor Mark Begich convened a large group of childhood wellness advocates and created the nationally-recognized Mayor's Task Force on Fitness, Obesity with four areas of concern. One was nutrition, one was the built environment, one was worksite wellness, and one was physical activity. I was head of the physical activity section. I would say that prior to the meeting, Dr. Richard Monzager, who was then the chief of the Alaska Division of Public Health, presented this PowerPoint, which was overweight and obesity in Alaska, an epidemic, this has only worsened, ladies and gentlemen. And he presented, among others, this data. Overweight and obesity, the health consequences in youth and adults, this is quite extensive. And furthermore, obesity, the economic costs comparing national and state data. And outgrowth of that was that I, according to CDC recommendations, recesses could possibly be structured. And I, I established a pilot program at Tyson Elementary, which only lasted for half a year on four various reasons. But the outcomes were significant in that it demonstrated among the students increased, improved behaviors, improved attendance, and improved academics. But you have, you must remember that this epidemic is absolutely real, such that today, many of you are probably aware that the recommended treatment of choice for extreme obesity among those 13 and older is medications and/or bariatric surgery. It's that critical. I then met Dr. Kelly Lessons and her colleague Carrie Carpenter and was honestly astounded by their encyclopedic knowledge and research of these issues. I was fortunate to help shape the 2019 AdHOC Committee incorporating their recommendations. The proposed Wellness Advisory Board edits are a reflection of their tireless efforts on behalf of childhood wellness. I hardly endorse.
Your, your time has just expired. We thank you for your testimony, your three minutes. Just, just up now. Thank you. Next up, Jay McDonald in person.
Evening. So, I'm Jay McDonald. I'm here to talk about diversity, inclusion, and equity. So, we hear so much about diversity, inclusion, and equity and how it's one of the main threats, main objectives of the school board and the school district. We don't often see specific examples of what diversity, inclusion, and equity looks like, though. So, today I brought an excellent representation. This is like the archetype of diversity, inclusion, and equity material that it's one of the books that was just recently purchased for our libraries. It's in Roemig and Bartlett. It's called Let's Talk About It by Erica Moen. So, it's got a, one of the chapters in here is about sexting. And I'll just read some of the text here. So, before you start sending your naughty masterpieces around the world, take some time to get friendly with photo editing software and apps. Digital photos are permanent and impossible to retract once they're out there. So, keep your recognizable features out of them before you share them. This is a book for kids. Don't forget to tell your, wait, crop out your face, hide your birthmarks and scars, and edit your, edit out your piercings and tattoos. And don't forget to tell your sweetie how hot they look. Let them know you appreciate the little gift they've sent you.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes?
Yeah, I'm going to interrupt you at this point. It sounds like you have a concern about a book. I'd be glad to get, connect you to the superintendent and their team to go through the appropriate process. I, I'd appreciate if you don't interrupt my time. Mr. McDonald, I've asked you to defer to the superintendent and their team if you have a concern about a book. We have a procedure and a process and a team ready to assist you if you'd like.
Mr. President, I don't think he's violated any rules. I mean, he hasn't used pornography, I mean, he hasn't shown any pornography, he hasn't shown any bad words, abusive words.
Mr. Donnelly, you can overrule the ruling of the chair if you'd like. It's my determination that we should ask Mr. McDonald to go through the appropriate process.
Well, I understand suggesting that to him. I think that's fine. But I don't think he's said anything that would cause us to cut off his testimony at this point.
I, I think we have a past precedent in this boardroom which would support my ruling. You're welcome, and I support your right to appeal the ruling of the chair, sir.
Well, yeah, I would appeal the ruling of the chair based on that I haven't heard anything that specifically violated our, our current rules for public testimony.
Understood. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I don't believe there's a debate, and so we would go straight to a vote whether we're going to uphold the ruling of the chair. Ms. Foster, can we have a vote? A yes vote would be to uphold the ruling of the chair. A no vote would be to sustain the overall, I suppose.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
No.
President Bellamy? President Bellamy, I think you're muted.
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you. Member Holloman?
No.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
And Member Jacobs?
Yes. By a vote of five to two, the ruling is upheld. So, Mr. McDonald, if you have any other items to testify on, you're welcome to do so.
Well, yeah, sure. I mean, I, I keep getting cut off when I just read these books that are just, there's still purchase orders out for these books. Like, they're, they're not old things that were just put on the shelves to rot. Like, these are, they're things that you're actively procuring, putting in class. The first book that I read, I'm going to bring some of the FOIA documents that I have next time I'm in here. But there, there's teachers that are actually using it on their reading list in their classroom as part of their class material. So, I don't want to hear that. So I don't want to hear that this, we're not giving this to kids. I was at the police department today, and I was talking to them about this, and what it comes down to is there's, there's a gray area where they say that, because you gotta understand that distribution of indecent and pornographic materials to minors is a Class C felony. I hope that people understand that. So the, if there's the argument that, well, it's loosely covered by the First Amendment, and that's what you're doing, that's what you're hiding behind to give this to students in school, then how can you say I don't have First Amendment rights to just read this to adults at a school board meeting? Is it, or is it not a First Amendment issue? I don't understand how it's appropriate for kids and it's not appropriate for the school board. I didn't even say a bad word. It feels a lot like you don't want parents to be seeing what's given to the kids. You're happy to give this to children? I've seen you, I mean, you even host reading times on the weekends. What books, what's, what's your reading list when you host reading time on the weekends with Felix? You're happy to give these books to kids? It seems like you're terrified to give them to parents, and I think it's an absolute travesty that you cut off my time and don't even let me have my three minutes. I think you're breaking your own rules. Thank you.
I think your three minutes are up. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I see no other individual signed up for testimony. Ms. Foster, is that correct? Okay. All right. Thank you much. We're going to take a 10-minute at ease. Okay, we'll call ourselves back to order. It is 7:40. Having wrapped a public comment, our next item is E, Consent Agenda. Would any board member like to pull an item currently on the consent agenda? I'm going to ask that we pull ASD memorandum number 100, Revision to School Board Policy 5040, Student Nutrition and Physical Activity, for discussion. That will move to action item F2. Any other member wish to pull an item from our consent agenda before we move forward with a motion to adopt or approve the consent agenda as written? Hearing seeing none, would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I move we approve the consent agenda with the suggested change on memorandum 100.
Made by Member Holloman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Lessons. Ms. Foster, are we going to do a voice vote?
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended passes seven to zero. We'll move on to action items. F1, ASD memorandum number 098, Revision to School Board Policy, BP 6115, Ceremonies and Observances. I have a motion to approve.
I move to approve ASD memorandum 098, Revision to School Board Policy, BP 6115, Ceremonies and Observances.
Made by Member Holloman, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Lessons. Is there any discussion? Member Donnelly?
Uh, Mr., Mr. President.
Chair is fine, sir.
Mr. Chair, I think this is a wonderful opportunity to fulfill the charge that the board has given in the existing policy to develop patriotic observances and ceremonies. So in addition to the, the main motion that's before us, I think it's a great time to visit some of the things that, that the district could be doing to help instill patriotism in our students. One thing that I felt for a long time would be really important was that we emphasized the National Anthem, of course, and this, you know, some of the days that I think would really be important for our, our students to hear the National Anthem would be Veterans Day, which this main motion applies to, and also September 11th and December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day. So I have drafted an amendment that we would do that and simply say that, you know, in all schools, the United States of America's National Anthem shall be played at the beginning of any regular school day held on Veterans Day, September 11th, or on December 7th. And I would so move amendment number one.
Member Donnelly, can you, for the record, can you read your amendment, please?
Yes. In addition to the, the new language that appears in the main motion, it would add the language, "In all schools, the United States of America's National Anthem shall be played at the beginning of any regular school day held on Veterans Day, September 11th, and December 7th."
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Member Donnelly, would you like to further discuss your amendment?
Well, there's few days in our country's culture and history that are more significant to us as Americans, I believe, than, than Veterans Day and Pearl Harbor Day and the tragedy that happened on 9/11. I really think it's something that should be immortalized in some form of remembrance in our schools. And this could be a very simple way to do it, that it's patriotic and the formerly adopted ceremony that's part of our, adopted by our federal government for our National Anthem, that's part of our curriculum in our music classes. It only takes about a minute to play it with loudspeakers. We have more than one school in our district to play it every morning, I believe, and those schools happen to be excelling. So I think there's no question that there's sufficient time to do it, and it would, and this particular proposal would only require it to be done on three days out of the year, and only when there's, those were actual school days.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Is there other discussion? Member Holloman?
Um, I'm gonna say the, the original amendment to our policy was really about empowering individual employees to have an option on, on that particular day. This changes it to where the board is trying to direct activities in the school buildings on several days, and there are a couple more amendments like that. So I, I would move that we refer this amendment to the amendment back to the Governance Committee for, for consideration.
Is there a second to the motion to refer?
Second.
Seconded by Member Wilson. Any discussion on the amendment to refer? Member Holloman, any additional comments?
Uh, just I'd like for there to be some time for the administration to be able to look at them and advise the board on any impact they see.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Motion to refer?
I'd wait till everybody else talked and then...
Okay. I don't see, oh, Madam President, I see your hand online.
Yeah.
Yeah, I go back to, we have our process. If we are going to bring, prior to bringing items to be voted on, while I understand this is an amendment, I think this amendment changes the intent of the policy. So I think we need to, it needs to go through governance. We need to try to follow our processes whenever possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Seeing no other comments, Member Donley.
Thank you. There's a lot of talk about the processes. I could give you examples over the last six years where the board didn't do anything like that. They changed things at the last minute without public notice. Unlike this proposal, where I actually brought this up at our last meeting and gave notice that I was moving forward with these amendments. I provided these amendments 10 days, you know, and plenty of time for the secretary to deal with those. I requested that they be posted on the agenda to provide public notice. And in addition to me making copies to provide to the public, which is very unusual to have in this meeting, the secretary also generously agreed to make copies to make sure they were available to the public on the table out there, and I've never ever really seen that done before either. So I think I jumped through every hoop I could possibly think of to provide notice on this. It couldn't be more simpler. I mean, play the National Anthem on Veterans Day, 9/11, and Pearl Harbor Day. It just doesn't seem like the kind of thing that we need to have a huge analysis of as far as the impact on our school district. So I would think that it's something we could go ahead and vote on. By the way, I didn't point out, of course, so the public can understand that this is exactly the board policy that deals with these kind of things that we've got before us in the main motion. It's Board Policy 615, Ceremonies and Observances, so it clearly seems appropriate at this time.
Member Holloman.
Yeah, I'd just say I don't think it's inappropriate at all, but we've got plenty of time on all these. Veterans Day, September 11th, December 7th, they're all months and months away. It'd just be a chance for any feedback, considered feedback by the administration or any other board members. So not meant to make it difficult, but just to have that time in committee to discuss.
Seeing no other hands in the room, no additional comments. We'll go ahead and have a voice vote on the motion to refer Member Donley's Amendment Number One to Governance. Ms. Foster.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Donley?
No.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
The motion to refer passes six yeas, one nay.
Mr. Chairman?
We're back on the main motion.
Could we have a, like, a one-minute adieu?
Sure, yep. A brief adieu, please.
Amanda?
Yes.
I might have, because you always told that you were, yeah, available, yeah. So we're going to call ourselves back to order. Member Donley, you have an amendment too. You just handed on to the board members. I'm going to ask that you read that into the record, because we don't have copies at the door.
Yeah, thank you. With the... Yeah, I submitted this last week, Mr. Chair, but the secretary was out of town and I apparently sent it to, I sent it to the secretary, I was told, but the president was acting in her place. two federal holidays, two particularly, two federal holidays.
It might just have better framing if you would agree to move to amend and read the language first and then speak to it all at once.
Will you allow me to speak to it if I move it?
Absolutely, of course. Yeah, it just might be helpful, because some folks don't have it in front of them.
Right, I'd be happy to do it that way, if you allow me to.
That would be great. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that paragraph.
So please go ahead and read your amendment into the record, and then feel free to speak to it.
So this amendment would say then on two federal holidays, in recognition of two federal holidays that are celebrated during the district's traditional summer break, the Fourth of July and the Juneteenth, that the first two, in recognition of the Declaration of Independence, which of course coincided with the Fourth of July, the first two sentences of the Declaration of Independence would be read on the last day of the school year to acknowledge that for the pupils that are going to experience that holiday during the summer. And also that the first two sentences of the Emancipation Proclamation would be read at that same time to celebrate Juneteenth, which traditionally comes at summer, during the summertime. The sentences appear below. The first two sentences of the Declaration of Independence and on the back page here, the first two sentences of the Emancipation Proclamation to commemorate Juneteenth appear also. So you can see they're not very long. I think I timed it. It was about 60 to 80 seconds to read them. So I would move amendment number two.
And I'm going to ask you, read that into the record, please.
Yes. So it would be to add to the main motion the following text. "On the last day of the school year, in recognition of the two federal holidays that are celebrated during the district's traditional summer break, the first two sentences of both the Declaration of Independence and the Emancipation Proclamation, whose reading in Texas on June 19th, 1865, is now celebrated as Juneteenth, shall be read over the public address system of district schools." And to read what those are, Mr. Chairman, the Declaration of Independence, "When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which has connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which laws of nature and the nature's God entitle them, a decent respect of the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to seek separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed; that whatever form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness." And the first two sentences of the Emancipation Proclamation read, "Whereas on the 22nd day of September in the year of our Lord 1,862, a proclamation was issued by the President of the United States containing, among other things, the following to wit: 'That on the first day of January in the year of our Lord 1,863, all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state, the people whereof shall then be in rebellion against such persons, and will do no act or acts to repress such persons or any of them in any efforts that they may make for their actual freedom.'"
Additional conversation on Amendment Two.
Sure, I'll take the opportunity to speak to this amendment.
Member Lessons.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciated Member Donley's packet of amendments. I did see this, the original version of this amendment as an opportunity to recognize the summer federal holidays. And at our recent Governance Committee meeting, I had brought up the concept of, well, what do we do about Juneteenth? It's a federal holiday that is not in any district calendar. And I think that there is some amount of value in recognizing this important moment in our annual calendar and this moment in our nation's history alongside the Fourth of July, another, the foundational moment in American history. would I rather, you know, design wonderful interactive lessons around each of these? Yes. Is taking a moment at the start of one day reasonable? I think it's okay.
Other conversation on Amendment Two. Member Wilson.
So just for clarification, you're asking that at every classroom, at every grade level, correct?
Yeah, what I would propose is that it be read over the loudspeakers at the beginning of the last day of school.
But for every?
Yes.
Grade level? I guess one of my concerns is to read it without additional context and explanation, especially for our younger, and even for many of our older students, would be for our kids at least, just hearing some information, but not having any context to it necessarily. I just feel like reading it without the context, without any lessons attached, kind of loses the purpose that you're hoping for. I don't know if I'm phrasing that correctly, but I feel like without that context, without the additional conversations, without some wonderful lessons to go along with it, I I mean, I just would have a difficult time assuming that even my older teens would have any context to it and understand it.
Thank you, Member Wilson. I'm going to jump in with a question for Dr. Bryant. Could you weigh in on the, what the process for implementation for something like this might look like? If you had the chance to consider and discuss this for a team, with your team, and then if you have concerns that might need some time to be worked out regarding the path forward for implementing this amendment if it's adopted.
Sure. I have not discussed this particular amendment with the team, and for that reason, that's why it's helpful to often talk about this in a governance committee setting, so that way we can hear about all the considerations when it comes to implementation, loudspeaker versus classroom, and whatnot. I know we've had similar conversations around the Pledge of Allegiance. So in terms of implementation, we would want to make sure that the board is informed on all the considerations. I do know one thing that I would bring up would be similar to what Member Wilson brought up, is that even the level of vocabulary in some of these sentences might be new to some of our younger students, so we would just want to make sure we were informed on how to make this what it was intended to be, which is a really powerful reminder of our nation's history and how far we've come along.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. I see President Bellamy's hands, and we'll move to Member Higgins.
So the attachment that Member that this amendment makes to Juneteenth is one view. It is not a global view. It is one history, yes. It is not global. And I think it's one thing for me as a board member to want to feel good about what is patriotic and what is considered to be, you know, what we want every kid to do in terms of being, and show, and know, or hear, in terms of being patriotic. But I just think this goes way too far, and I would like to have time to talk about it, not attaching it here. I think it's out of place here. But, you know, it's not about being anti-patriotic. It's about, for me, it's about being real. You cannot attach, none of us can attach a meaning to a holiday in one way. And this is what you're asking, this is what this is asking us to do. And I think this is beyond what we need to do. If we want to have Juneteenth celebrated, then we make it a priority, like we make everything else a priority. If we want to have, you know, we're in the business of educating kids about a lot of things, and it can't just, it can't just be packaged this way. Thank you.
We'll go to Member Higgins and Member Holloman.
Thank you. You know, I'm listening to this, and I'm watching individual parts of history being selected out as if like 9/11 is one of the most historic, like you want to remember the main, you want to look at Pearl Harbor, you want to look at all these other dates. So we've got a lot of things out there, which we try to cover in American history and we cover in civics. And if we're going to make a decision to do something during the year to kind of remind people of the history of where they are and things like that, I don't mind looking at that. I don't want to pick out a particular thing and say, oh, we have to do it this way. I look for the administration to work with us on that kind of issue. I have no problem with it. From a historic standpoint, I remember 2010, when we came out with all these goals, John Steinbach said, "We got to review civics, top to bottom," and I liked that. That was okay. He was looking at saying, "What are we doing for American history? What are we doing with civics?" And I don't mind that discussion, but I don't want to just select a particular issue and say, "Okay, let's add this to some activity," and so that establishes patriotism. Somewhere along this line, we've got a lot of activities with this and lots of options. I'd rather give that careful consideration before we move forward.
Member Holloman.
Once again, I'll say that anytime we reach into the school day and grab time, whether it's a minute or 10 minutes, I want us to do it in a considered way with time for staff members and the administration in particular to review it and be able to come back and talk to us about it and have that conversation. Once again, I'll move that we refer this to the Governance Committee for consideration.
We've got a motion by Member Holloman to refer Amendment Two to Governance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by President Bellamy. Any additional discussion from yourself, starting off, Member Holloman?
I've already spoken to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the motion to refer the Amendment To Committee? I see, so no other comments in the room or online, so Member Donley, and wrap up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. said that reading, well, the quote I wrote down as she was speaking, it says, "This would attach the meaning of a holiday, attach something to the meaning of a holiday," and that's just one view. But this is not comment. It is word for word the foundation of historical documents that are the very reason for these national holidays. I mean, you wouldn't have a Juneteenth without the Emancipation Proclamation, and you wouldn't have a Fourth of July, Independence Day, without the Declaration of Independence. And this is word for word what they say. I'm hoping that it inspires students to do more research about it and to read more about it and to think about it. And what a great way to leave them at the end of their school year, but with something like that to challenge them to go learn more about it. Additionally, I can see how this could be turned into a great educational exercise by schools, where they could have students preparing for it in the by schools where they could have students preparing for it in the week before by reading the, you know, more about the Emancipation Proclamation and the Declaration of Independence. So it would be more fresh in their minds when they actually celebrate those days and more meaningful to them. And additionally, I could see them having individual students read, read just individual phrases from each of these sentences. It could be quite an excellent way for students to participate and learn from that. So I think there's some real, real positive elements to this, and it's not comment, it's not one worldview of this or a different view of it. It's the actual historical documents that are the reason we have these holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, member Donley. Before we vote, I guess I'll say that I, I tend to agree with member Holloman, and I think the past 10 minutes or so have documented why we're, we're holding a mini Governance Committee hearing live during our board meeting, which isn't how we work most effectively. And I think the last year and a half documents that. We do have a process in place for governance to take these matters up. We're hearing from administration that they aren't prepared to even consider how to implement. And so I think that those are, are worthy reasons why governance should take this up. And as member Holloman mentioned previously, we still do have some time, additional meetings to come where the committee can do that. So that's my preference, and we'll leave it there. Seeing no other comments. Ms. Foster, can we have a voice vote on amendment two?
Member Lessons? Point of order. Are we voting on?
The motion is to refer to committee.
Correct. Apologize for the framing. The motion is to refer amendment two to the Governance Committee as is written on our screens here.
Member Lessons? Yes. Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donley?
No.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes. A vote of six to one, amendment two is referred to Governance. Let's refer the review. Going back to the original motion for ASD memorandum number 098 on the motion to approve, is there other conversation, discussion or amendments? So back on the original motion, because you've spoken twice now, Mr. Donley, we're going to go with Madam President. President Bellamy, the floor is yours.
So we, I, I've just wanted some clarification. So we are back to, we are back at the original.
Correct.
Okay.
Your point of view is well taken. We are on the main motion to approve ASD memorandum number 098, and we, as we have referred the two amendments to committee.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm good.
I have member Wilson, then we'll go to member Donley.
I just have a question, actually. I should probably go back to the original one. As it's phrased, employees may choose to use a personal day without penalty if they choose. It's the without penalty that I would like clarification on. I'm not understanding why that verbiage is, what that verbiage means.
I mean, you got.
Member Holloman, would you like to speak to member Wilson's question?
First of all, it's poorly worded.
Uh-oh. We have sound? We lost sound.
Has to, but if it's an in-service day, attendance is expected unless you're too ill to come to school. But it is a day that has a huge emotional impact on individuals, veterans in particular, but a lot of family members as well. And some of them have particular things they would like to do on Veterans Day. And the, the goal is to allow our certificated staff to do that if they choose.
Member Wilson, does it answer your question, or do you have a follow-up?
I have a follow-up. So I, I guess that did not answer my question as to, is there currently, so they're not, staff is not allowed, just for clarification? Can you clarify, Dr. Bryant? Is, are staff not allowed to?
Sure, yes. It's spelled out in the collective bargaining agreement specifically, that language. So this would essentially amend that specifically as it relates to Veterans Day when it coincides with staff development. And I think the intent of the original CBA language was to ensure we have as many certificated personnel participating in staff development as they only get a few days a year. That was the intent. But we went through the process and discussed why this is something worth the consideration of the full board.
Member Wilson, any follow-up? Okay. So we are still on our main motion. Any other additional discussion on the main motion to approve ASD memorandum number 098?
So, yeah, I do. I have a question.
Okay. Madam President, I'm going to go to member Donley, then yourself, as, as you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, there's a national federally recognized holiday called Constitution Day. It's September 17th. And it's kind of unique because it comes with a federal mandate that any public schools in America that accept federal dollars must do activities to educate our students about the United States Constitution on that day to be able to be eligible for those federal funds. Recently, we did a survey of our schools, and it's quite a confusing hodgepodge what schools or do or don't do out there to observe this federal mandate. So one thing I thought would be really appropriate to do that, to be consistent across our district, was to have the preamble of the Constitution of the United States be read over the public address system on Constitution Day. And so just to say what that would imply, how quick that goes, and it's pretty beautiful, Mr. Chairman. I remember having to memorize this when I was a kid at Willow Crest Elementary. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our prosperity, do, obtain, and establish this Constitution of the United States of America." And amendment number three would simply say that on Constitution Day, the preamble of the Constitution of the United States shall be read over the public address system of district schools at the beginning of the day. And I would move amendment number three.
Thank you, member Donley. Is there a second? Second. Seconded by member Holloman. Member Donley, any further discussion on your motion to amend?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate the second. This is a federal mandate that we're not assured that, really clear that all our schools are complying with right now. It's up to us as the board to make sure we're complying this because it comes on the condition of federal funds. Federal funds are conditioned on us doing something in all our schools for Constitution Day. And it's not clear from the survey that was conducted a few months ago that it's absolutely happening. And so I think it'd be a very wise thing for this board to adopt this to ensure that we continue to be eligible for federal funds.
Thank you, member Donley. I see member Holloman's hand.
Once again, I'm, I'm going to move to send to the Governance Committee, and if there's a second, I'll speak to them.
A second.
Motion to refer by member Holloman, seconded by member Lessons. Member Holloman, on your motion to refer the amendment?
Once again, anything that, that actually takes a bite into the school day, I think the board needs to consider carefully, again, giving administration and school staff an opportunity to speak to it and, and digest it as well, especially given that there are legal implications, which I have to admit I have always been unaware of. Like for the administration to research that and, one, make sure this meets the requirement, or if we need to do more than this. Yeah, again, I, I agree with the spirit of it, and I see it as a potentially valuable addition to what happens in our schools. But I do want it to all be considered in context of everything we're considering asking schools to do that comes into the school day. And also making sure that, that what we propose is adequate to meet the requirements of the, for federal funding. Thank you.
Thank you, member Holloman. Additional conversation on the motion to refer the amendment? Seeing no other discussion, Ms. Foster, a voice vote on the motion to refer amendment three to committee?
Member Wilson?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
No.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman? Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes. A vote of six to one, amendment three has been referred to committee. We're back on the main motion to approve ASD memorandum number 098. Is there additional discussion?
I have a question.
Madam President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this only addresses certificated people. Is that because, and I'm trying to understand, I think I know why, but if the maker of, if, if Andy or Kelly could speak to that, why not all employees?
Thank you, Madam President, for the question. Member Holloman, are you able to address?
Yes, the, the change in policy says employees. It doesn't, to my knowledge, certificated are the only people actually affected, although I may be wrong on that. But the amendment says employees in order to be completely inclusive.
May I follow up?
Follow up, Madam President.
So then I'd like to ask the superintendent, what is the impact of this? I mean, how, what, what, what do we think, what, what would the likely impact of this be? I mean, there's no way to know how many people are gonna not show up that day. The good thing is there's no kids there. But what would, what would the impact be? Have the administration thought about that?
We have. This went through the Governance Committee process. So we had the opportunity to share the concern that there is a possibility that fewer staff members will fully participate in the breadth of staff development that we offer every year. And for that reason, in the long term, we're exploring our calendar in general. There may be adjustments that would be appropriate, which could include relooking at what holidays that we offer. We're also looking at snow days and some other things. So I'm anticipating longer-term solutions, not just in response to Veterans Day, but really our philosophy to staff development. Because I believe that professional development shouldn't just be a day, it should really be an ongoing experience that happens throughout a teacher's time. So that's on my mind. But in the short term, there may be fewer people that participate in the full breadth of staff development that we currently offer.
And so those people will take, they would actually just take leave without being, without the leave being denied? Is that what it?
Correct. They no longer be in violation of the collective bargaining agreement.
So this policy sets aside the CBA?
Correct. It clarifies and actually amends a portion of the CBA to be favorable to our certificated employees.
Any other thoughts, Madam President, before we move on?
I'm good.
Member Holloman.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say, I don't think we as a board have the ability to amend the CBA. But this is a message from the board to the administration that if somebody wanted to take a personal day on Veterans Day, specifically that particular holiday, that the, the administration would not penalize them in any way. I mean, the, the CBA still stands. And, and I think that members affected by that weigh it. I mean, we all, as someone who's been in that position, understanding that you're missing a provided training that you may have to make up or, or be without is a consideration. So I don't think people are casually going to do it. But there are people that just have very strong feelings about what happens on Veterans Day. It's not, it's not the same kind of holiday as Presidents' Day or Labor Day. It, it's very emotional and personal for a lot of people. So in, in my interpretation, CBA still stands, but the administration would understand the wishes of the board in this case.
That is correct. It wouldn't alter the, the CBA, but it does send a message and perhaps even encourage the administration to proactively seek a letter of agreement, just to clarify for all parties.
Thank you, member Holloman. President Bellamy.
Would this not be more appropriate as an AR? And did, and I was not at the, um, the Governance Meeting when this was, when it was discussed in full. But was there any discussion about this being, being an AR as opposed to a policy? I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with it. I just think to make it policy is, is, I don't know. I, I feel like it's out of the board's lane, but that's just me. So was there any talk, any discussion on whether this could be better as an administrative regulation? And how, how the superintendent does business? Yes.
Madam President, I'm going to refer your question to our Governance Chair, member Holloman.
Unfortunately, unless I become the superintendent, I don't get to make ARs, and I don't want to do that.
No, but we, we.
This is a message from the board to the administration. And as such, I think policy is the right place for it, and it's not revocable unless someone asks the board to revoke it. I think that's appropriate. We, we get to make policy. That's one of the things we do.
Thank you, member Holloman. Any other additional discussion? Member Wilson.
I guess, I understand we get to make policy, but I also understand there's a collective bargaining agreement that the, the administration has bargained. And I guess I'm not understanding how the collective bargaining agreement as it stands without the negotiation, negotiation of a, a letter of agreement or a memorandum of agreement, even with, I, I guess it's just, I understand we're giving the direction to the administration, but there's a conflict in how that could actually be put forth. I, I, I'm, I'm not clarifying correctly, but I'm very confused.
So, and, and member Wilson, just to add, maybe while Dr. Bryant addresses this, I guess my question to, to dovetail onto that is would administration, or does administration have any preference if this desire that the board may express through a vote via the language that member Holloman and the Governance Committee have drafted be in the form of a board policy amendment? Or would a resolution be a preferred vehicle? Or is either one equally appropriate?
We could go in either direction at this point, because we've deliberated this particular issue through multiple Governance Committee meetings. We're comfortable with this as it stands. But to the points raised tonight, I think this is a conversation for us to think about as a board, as it relates to what direction do we go, policy versus administrative regulation? I think the fundamental difference for this item is that it came from a board member. So we went through the process, and the board member's means of achieving change is through a policy versus if it were something that came from the administration, it may have started as an AR that would perhaps become a policy. So sometimes it almost depends on the order of who's expressing the preference for the change. So I think that's the issue here, and I don't have the answers tonight. But we did have the opportunity to discuss administrative implications. It's really helped me reflect upon how we're going to approach holidays and professional development in the long term. So I'm not very concerned. I think that the spirit of this policy is coming from a very good, genuine place. And for that reason, we're comfortable pursuing the LOE route in this situation. Could this have occurred in a different way? Yes.
Thank you for the insightful response, Dr. Bryant. We'll go back to member Holloman, and I just want to mention that Robert's rules is pretty particular that we speak no more than three times, but we are clearly deviating. So we wrap up conversation before we vote.
I was just going to offer some historical reference. The prohibition about personal leave on in-service days is longstanding for the reasons that Dr. Bryant outlined before. Historically, Veterans Day was either a holiday or a school day, and it varied depending on what the board voted and what the Calendar Committee suggested. It's relatively recent that it's become an in-service day. And that was. And that was, um, of course, the reason is that the administration is looking for time to have trainings. Um, but when it became an in-service day, the option to be in the building, in, with your class in the building or be out on holiday evaporated for certificated personnel. So it, it's not that, um, the language in the contract was specific about that. At the time that was adopted, uh, Veterans Day was either a holiday or a school day. And on a school day, you can take personal leave. On a holiday, you don't have to take any leave. Uh, it's just two different things coming together in a way that created a conflict that used to not exist. So, um, you know, as much as we can, we try not to direct the, uh, administration in bargaining. Um, but this sends a clear message about whether we have a particular desire.
Thank you, Member Holloman. Seeing no other, um, discussion, we will move to a voice vote on memorandum to approve ASD. Um, ASD memorandum number zero nine eight.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more amendment.
Okay, um, Member Donley, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the leeway in moving these amendments. Um, there's been a lot of discussion about going through the committee process. I have several proposals that have gone to the Governance Committee and haven't gotten the support to move forward to the full board. Um, and under our current rules, unless I can get a second from the board, I can't get those before this board. So this is my only opportunity to discuss some of those, at least one of those proposals. And that's the, uh, the, um, having the National Anthem played in our schools on some sort of regular basis. I, I would love to have it be here as a main motion. I've tried to get that for a long time, um, but it isn't. Um, and so in this particular amendment, it would, it would simply say that in all schools, uh, the United States of America's National Anthem shall be played at the beginning of the school day on the first day of every month. And also that in all schools, this Alaska State Flag Song shall be played following the National Anthem at the beginning of the school, of the school day on the first school day of every month. And individual schools may choose to begin additional school days with the National Anthem and/or the Alaska State Flag Song. Um, that proposal on this subject has been in the Governance Committee and hasn't been, uh, brought to the full committee. And I, I, this is my only opportunity to get this discussed, so I would move Amendment Number Four.
I'm going to ask this chair, I'm going to ask for a point of information. Member Donley, I believe that these amendments are similar to um, previous amendments that have been referred to committee. Are these substantially different from what's been referred to committee?
Um, the, I believe the version that was referred to committee said that, uh, was a version that said that just any playing of the National Anthem during a month, that schools should have something. It could be at a football game. It could be, uh, at an assembly, but that would qualify as the once a month, um, mandate. Um, this is more specific, and it's, it says that it show, that once a month, it shall be played at the beginning of the, the first school day of the month. So I think it's a little bit different, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. And have you, have you read the, the, the full, um, language of your amendment to the record at this point? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, I have.
Thank you, Member Donley. Is there a second? Hearing none, um, that amendment fails. Um, I will note that a similar version has been referred to committee previously, um, and is sitting in governance at this point. With that said, um, is there any additional discussion on ASD memorandum number zero nine eight? Hearing seeing none, Ms. Foster can we have a voice vote on the motion to approve?
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
No.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
And Member Jacobs?
Yes. By a vote of six to one, um, the revisions to ASD memorandum, I'm sorry, the revisions to BP six one one five, ceremonies and observances contained in ASD memorandum number zero nine eight, um, have been approved. We'll move on to action item.
Point of personal privilege?
Member Holloman, a point of personal privilege.
I just want to say, I think Member Donley raises a good point in that it's not clear, um, what a member would do if they, if something's presented in committee and it fails. It's not clear how to bring it to the fore. And there's, to me, there's some muddy water in the whole process that the Governance Committee should clarify, um, because, yeah, it may not, it may come out with a negative recommendation from the committee, but it should still be able to be brought to the board, um, for a consideration and possible adoption. So that is something I'll make a note of to look at and make sure there's, uh, try to either find clarity in our existing policies or work to include that so that, um, it's clear. Because, yeah, no vote in committee doesn't mean it can't be considered by the board. It just means the committee's not going to recommend that it is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Holloman. We're moving on to action item, um, F two, which was, um, E six, ASD memorandum number zero one zero, zero, I'm sorry, number one hundred. Revision to School Board Policy fifty forty, student nutrition and physical activity. Um, could I ask for a motion to approve?
I move to approve memorandum one zero zero, revision to School Board Policy BP fifty forty, student nutrition and physical activity.
Second. Made by Member Lessons, seconded by Member Holloman. Um, Member Lessons, the floor is yours as the maker of the motion.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I want to say that one of the purposes of, um, pulling this, I think this evening is to clarify the intent of the committee that, uh, brought this together. And that is that it would become effective no later than the start of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Um, it is really a landmark piece of, um, for policy. It's complex. It's comprehensive. It aligns ASD with best practices and federal requirements. It reflects the will and, um, desires of a lot of community members, and it is in the best interests of our students. Um, but, but all that being said, it's not easy to implement overnight. So, uh, just pulling it and, um, making sure that the intent is that it will become active um, for the start of the upcoming school year will give the administration and individual schools and principals and staff I think ample time to prepare.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Um, I'll take the floor at this point. I did want to, um, acknowledge, um, the, uh, acknowledge the individuals who were, um, a part, a part of the, um, subcommittee that member, that President Bellamy formed. Um, Member Lessons and I had the privilege of chairing a group of, um, individuals that represented, um, health professionals, um, ASD staff, um, ASD parents, um, community members, foster parents. There was a, a really wide breadth of perspective, um, that helped take this, uh, momentum that started with Member Lessons years ago as, uh, before she joined the board, um, and then get it from the ten yard line to the, the end zone here today. So I wanted to thank them for their participation, wanted to thank Member Lessons for her leadership and persistence, frankly. Um, and then getting this, um, through the committee process, through the subcommittee process, um, and then here in front of us today. Um, I think that this represents a significant change that will be best for students, um, as we've heard in public testimony and in committee meetings, um, over and over again. Um, the, the only thing I'll say is we desperately need to address the vacancies, um, that plague some of our capiterias right now, which I think is kind of just the last piece, um, to where we have the, the properly paid, compensated and fully staffed workforce to make this policy, um, you know, fully a reality. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that that can soon occur. Um, you know, certainly, um, our state partners have a role to play in there for sure. And so, um, in closing, I'll just thank Member Lessons for your leadership. Thank the, um, the committee members. Thank the board for making this possible. Um, and I'll, I'll leave my comments there. Thank you. Other remarks before we proceed to vote. Dr. Bryant?
Yes, I just wanted to briefly share two things. Uh, one, uh, just to put on the record, that is our expectation that we will begin working on the implementation plan for this, including any applicable administrative recommendation or regulations, rather, um, such that we can fully implement the policy at the beginning of next school year. So that's in the works. And then two, I just wanted to commend the co-chairs of the committee, Members Jacobs and Members Lessons and those involved in the committee. I really do think that this is a wonderful example of what happens when the community and the school board and administration come together um, and really troubleshoot ways, um, to, to make better outcomes for kids. Um, and then specifically to you, Member Lessons, I want to commend you on your leadership. I remember, uh, researching all about ASD during the interview process, and I read all about your passion on this topic, and you've really taken it, um, to the finish line or about to take the finish line. So I just want to commend, um, that the incredible, um, way that you're champion for this work.
May I make one brief comment?
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Well said. And, uh, yeah, Member Lessons, the floor is yours.
Um, thank you for the kind words, but I've learned one thing on this board, and that there is no magic wand, and I don't get to do any one thing by myself except be persistent. And so I am deeply grateful for the collaboration and comments that board members, uh, before this board, um, initiated. Um, for the time and dedication of staff members who participated in hours of meetings. Um, your thoughts and insights and expertise were deeply valuable. So thank you all.
All right. I think it's fitting we end conversation well, but maybe not. Member Donley, the floor is yours.
Um, at our last meeting, I raised some concerns that had brought to me by some, um, parents at some schools, um, that where the parental advisory folks had, had a policy of, of sometimes utilizing recess for study periods. Um, and I inquired whether, what can we do for those schools that would no longer be able to do that under this policy? And I was just wondering if the administration or anybody had, had, developed any guidance to proffer to them of how to replace that, uh, tool that they're currently utilizing with approval of their parental groups, um, um, for, um, helping the academics of students that are struggling.
Dr. Bryant, would you like to answer that question either directly or through Board Connect?
I think through Board Connect would be best, because I don't want to speak on behalf of the committee that worked on this for hours. And I'm sure that they have a lot that they want to say to ensure that we fulfill the spirit of this and also ensure academic outcomes aren't fallen by the wayside. It's a great question.
Thank you, Member Donley. Any additional con, uh, conversation or discussion? Hearing seeing none, Ms. Foster, a voice vote on the motion to approve ASD memorandum number zero, uh, one zero zero, uh, a revision to School Board Policy fifty forty, student nutrition and physical activity.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And Member Jacobs?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. That concludes our action items. We'll move on to Section G, non-action items. These are six items, which will be back in front of us at the next meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to discuss, um, any of these six memorandums tonight? Hearing is seeing none. We'll move past our non-action items. We have no additional public comment. Uh, Dr. Bryant, Superintendent Section I, the, the floor is yours.
All right. Uh, good evening, ASD Board and community. Uh, February is off to a great start uh, from an exciting Battle of the Books competition that I got to witness at West High School, um, for the first time, uh, to some movement in Juneau towards, uh, structural reform of school funding. Uh, there is a lot going on. Uh, later this month, I'll be taking my own trips to Juneau in support of our legislative priorities for the public's awareness. Those are the three Vs, the base student allocation, bus funding and bond debt reimbursement. Visit ASDK twelve dot org slash legislative for more information on those three priorities. Uh, I do look forward to our next meeting when we'll have the opportunity to deep dive on our reading proficiency data. And by the end of this week, I'll share more on the direction administration recommends going um, with regards to the state's ELA curriculum incentive grant. A recommendation to change curriculum would mean board action as soon as this time next month. So more on that to come this week. On a separate note, I want to invite board members to ask any outstanding questions regarding the proposal for sixth grade to middle school between now and the next board meeting. We want to make sure that the board is informed on this, so we will prioritize those questions. While shifting sixth grade to middle school, uh, will not necessarily result in financial savings, more importantly, it opens the possibility of more enrichment and academic opportunities for those students. This change wouldn't happen next year, so we'd have plenty of time to work through the logistics and act upon the concerns of those impacted. And it also gives ample time for the current fourth grade class and families to process and internalize this shift. Um, that'll be an action item next meeting. All of that to say, we're keeping strong momentum with regards to focusing our energy on shifts that can positively impact academic outcomes. Once we pass a balanced budget this month, I am hopeful we can move full steam ahead on the goals and guardrails on being front and center of the conversation. And then lastly, February is also Black History Month, and I look forward to attending various events throughout the community where the contributions of Black leaders and community members, past and present, will be honored and celebrated. Uh, I'll also be presenting on a panel at the Betty Davis African American Health and Equity Summit on February eighteenth, where we'll discuss and gather feedback on how we can strengthen our pipelines for educators of color. And lastly, uh, Happy Board Appreciation Month. Uh, being a board member and elected leader in the community can be all-consuming, and I'm incredibly lucky to be working alongside seven incredible community leaders who are all in this for all the right reasons. So on behalf of the administration, we appreciate your role in shaping the vision and direction for our school district, and we're not done celebrating you, uh, quite yet. Uh, so stay tuned. It, we have a full month to celebrate board members. So thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. I think that's a great way to end, but unfortunately, we've got a couple other agenda items, so we'll move quickly. Uh, J one is school and adminis, School Board and Administration comments. Um, we'll start on my left. Member Donley, the floor is yours for a School Board member comment.
I just thank the board for allowing me to put some proposals forward regarding our, um, patriotic observances. So thank you for your time tonight.
All right, so I will go next, um, in our order. Well, I'm sorry, our student representative, Mishaw, would you have hung in there with us tonight? Would you like to make a comment?
Uh, I don't have anything. Just some high school sports wrapping up and going into spring season. Same with middle school too. So bowling season's ended, guys. So.
Thank you, Mishaw. Um, I'll take my place in line to say that, Member Donley, I appreciate, uh, your recognition of our allowance of, uh, your amendments. I also appreciate your continual, um, and accurate references to what this board has done versus what previous boards, uh, may have done, uh, prior to at least my joining the body. Um, I did want to take a second to acknowledge and thank Members Wilson and Lessons for heading down to Juneau and, um, providing much-needed, um, both on the record and off the record testimony to elected officials. Um, watching the hearing yesterday, I think it was much needed, hearing a student voice. And I think it's the same reason we adjusted our board policy to, to move students up in the order. Um, when we make appearances or give remarks, um, for better, for worse, we are seen, um, as elected officials. Um, students bring no such agenda, and so their voice is especially valid and pure. So I thank you to those students who participated. Thank you to the lawmakers who made time and looking forward to more discussion. Uh, Member Wilson?
Thank you. I, I usually try to keep it short. Tonight is not that night, so just making up for it tonight a little bit. Um, I, I appreciate Dr. Bryant mentioning the Battle of the Books. I spoke to, um, a, a young man who I believe is in fifth grade, who proudly told me that his, uh, team took fifth place out of fifty-seven teams. And he actually said that he read the books two and three times. Every book, he read two and three times. So they, these students did a tremendous amount of preparation for this, uh, for this competition. So kudos to all of our kids that participated and kudos to the, the staff members that worked with these students um, and put this competition together for them. Also wanted to, um, talk about, a little bit about our trip to Juneau. I, I had an amazing time, um, and in part because our students were there. We had a teacher and four students who. We had a teacher and four students who were extremely articulate, who were extremely thoughtful, who presented testimony at the education hearing and, and got actually close to a standing ovation in the area where I was, which was not in the room, but I, it really was a mic drop moment for our students to talk. They were absolutely amazing, amazing, and I look forward to all of you getting to hear them when they join us. I think it was next meeting, but when they join us soon, so. And, and thank you again to the legislators for taking the time to meet with us. They were super excited that we had students with us. And February is maybe a short month, but it's filled with many celebrations. We, ASD, are highlighting a few of those celebrations, such as Black History Month. For example, this month's edition of ASD Connect has a beautiful tribute to Dr. Ethel Drea Davis. Dr. Davis was the first Black teacher and principal in Alaska and the Anchorage School District, taking the helm at Fairview Elementary School in 1969. Last year, the school was renamed in her honor. Check out the interview we did with her daughter about the legacy of Dr. Davis. All month, we'll be sharing stories, highlighting these amazing people, making a difference in our schools and community. And on a side note, I am a Fairview resident, so I'm, I'm super proud of the name change and all of the recognition. We also have many events happening here at ASD this month. We recently wrapped up a curriculum review and an alternative programs expo at the Ed Center. It was wonderful to see the turnout from the community, and there will be, or there, there was way more than expected. So that was amazing. And on our next event is next Wednesday, February 15th. The lottery system will begin accepting applications for the 2023-24 school year. April 6th lottery closes for applications at 5:00 PM. And April 7th, the lottery will run. April 14th, the parent notifications of the lottery results will go out at 5:00 PM. And I also wanted to recognize that it is National School Counselor Week, so the 6th through the 10th. So thank you to all the counselors for all that you do for our students. You do tremendous work, and it's extremely valuable. And I hope that families take the time to thank their counselors at their school. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wilson. Member Lessons?
I'll be brief tonight. First, we have a finance committee meeting tomorrow at noon from 12 to one. I will echo Member Wilson's comments that the weekend with our students, Jessie, Shane, Rachel and Mika, as well as their teacher, Mrs. Lewis, was extraordinary. They each came from four different high schools across ASD. And it's really one of the joy, last year, attending this flying weekend and getting to know those four students was one of the absolute highlights of my time, my first year on the board. And I think that this weekend will be no different. It is just a joy to get to know students individually. I feel like at the board level, we hover around the 30,000 foot level, and we can parachute into a classroom. But to get to understand what makes one student passionate about a language course and another passionate about a science class or, or calculus, these things, or, or each, each student shown in a different and unique way. And it was a joy, and frankly, I was proud to sit next to them as they spoke about what mattered to them in education. And I want to echo, I don't want to steal their thunder, but I do want to amplify one of the phrases that one student used. He said, "Believe in us." And I think that's a really important message to, to carry forward.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Member Holloman?
Yeah, I want to say I didn't go to Juneau, but I did watch the testimony. And a lot of it was compelling, and a lot, every student I saw did a marvelous job. And, and in particular, I think just helped make it really personal. And they're talking about what their school does for them on a very individual level. I believe it was Dillingham that mentioned that 25% of the kids in their school are in foster care. It's staggering to me. And they get no additional support. It's just that the, the state moves foster kids there because there are some resources in Dillingham. Schools around the state are really hurting with a lot of the issues they face. And, and I think a lot of that got brought out to the Senate Committee, and the Senate Committee gives me a lot of hope that something will happen in that. I too want to echo the recognition of counselors, and of course, February has a number of recognitions. But it, it seems like we're, we're seeing more brash actions by people since we're back in person. And I don't just mean in our schools, but also in our schools. That just people react more quickly, more violently, more erratically. The need for understanding our mental health has never been greater, and the load has never been greater. But I don't think we stacked up for it. I think we still have the same cadre of people working it and really appreciate everything that they're putting into it. Lastly, I want to say this budget process has been different from any other in that we've been talking about the budget for about six years now, from what I can tell. But I think it's been helpful. I think starting at, at the time, we started it back in August, I believe, early September at the latest, developed recognition by the public and by a lot of people that just wouldn't be there if we hadn't discussed some of the impacts that we were facing. If we'd started talking about it in November, I don't think we'd have the same reaction that, that we're getting right now. So I do want to say I appreciate what the staff did. I appreciate the way they have brought it out. We've had a lot more time to think about it. We've had more time to get feedback from the public. And, and watching it evolve is, has been kind of painful because it has been sorting through a lot of different programs. I can't see the value of sixth graders being in middle school, but that stands out to me as the one real improvement for students. Most of the time you have to cut the budget, you, you cut something that benefits kids. And it's a whole lot of cuts in a whole lot of places, and it's, it's been frustrating. So again, thank you to the staff for rolling it out the way we have and for all the time it's meant that we've gotten to talk to people and try to explain it. And thank you to the folks who made the trip to Juneau and spoke to our legislators.
Thank you. Member Holloman, going online. Member Higgins?
Thank you. I'm in Juneau, and I had a chance to watch the students do the presentation to the Senate Finance Committee. And I have to say, it was extremely impressive and had a chance to talk to them after that with dinner. And, and it was just the feedback from the legislators with the students issue is probably stronger than what we, what I've seen in the past when I've gone with them. They just, they did an absolutely spectacular job. I appreciate, obviously, the board members here participating and being, working with them and the teacher with Chaperone. So, I mean, the, the nightmare there is that if we're going to get something done, we've got to recognize it's got to be the public pushing that issue. I think that's a safe statement. We, last time I remember, they really made a change. It was great to last the schools when they called in and started telling the legislators what they want. I think the House is going to be the big issue to get the funding we need. The advantage of the Senate is that it's a mix of Democrats and Republicans, and they're just not fighting each other. They're just dealing with the issue. I kind of like that. It's a really nice fit, but the House is going to be, you know, half a half and only a certain percentage will be involved in decision-making. And so how that comes out is going to be an interesting challenge. But the House is, is, we need the public calling to make a difference. That's what we really need to, for the public to tell them what they want. And we need the help. I would just say I like tonight's meeting when we deal with the issue of school start times because we're dealing with academics. And all of the discussions that we have in these board meetings, to me, that the highest value is when we're looking for opportunities to improve academic outcomes. I appreciate the board's role in, in pushing that issue. They've talked about it prior to now, about, was the board interested? And I think that was a good move forward, and I appreciate that.